All right, we're going to get started here. If I can get the last two commissioners up here. I'll call this meeting to order if we could do roll call.
Commissioner Laird.
Here.
Commissioner Milne. Commissioner Nicolason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Freel.
Here.
Could we stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
We could move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, excuse me. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
A motion made by Commissioner Laird and a second by Commissioner North. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move. Under contracts, agreements, and resolutions, we have the Transportation Services Agreement between Casper and the Trona County International Airport and Sky West Airlines. Have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Nicolason.
I second it.
Second made by Commissioner Laird. Any discussion?
I do have a brief request that I don't know. I think I did visit with Charmaine about it, but I think there should be something in the agreement that says if any court of competent jurisdiction would say that the agreement is invalid, then the agreement would be null and void. It's in most agreements, isn't anything that is outrageously different, but it just covers it if somebody decides it, you know. It's a litigious society, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, when the airport came to us a year and a half ago and first brought this to us in November of 2021, several of us were kind of dragging or drug, dragging our feet to support this and because I, you just basically get the feeling that some of the airlines are blackmailing us into doing things. And I said the same thing back then. I, and now the numbers are twice what they were at that point in time. We needed, we need another airline in here. We need, we need a couple of them in here to make things right, but I, I don't know what the numbers were that, that we paid out or that are on the, on the list for us to pay out in January and February. And I know they were a whole lot higher this year than they had, they were in 2022. And I'm just, I think we need to be good stewards of the public's money and looking at the total cost, I, this is a tough balancing act, but I just have a really hard time with looking at the potential of up to $1.8 million of taxpayer money over, you know, over a year's period. You know, I know it's $880,000 a year. That's just a lot of money and right now I'm looking at everything. The other expenses that this county has right now with snow removal, helping out Midwest Edgerton with their water line to the tune of $850,000. There's a lot of things out there that it's not like we're flush. If we were and we had a lot more money, I would be a whole lot more supportive and it's not because I don't want another airline in here. I do, I want one really bad, but I sat, I sat on a plane coming back from Washington, DC with the sheriff from Montrose County, Colorado, and he was telling me that they actually have more planes flying into Montrose, Colorado right now than they do in Grand Junctions. They've got five different airlines down there and I don't know what they're doing different. I have no idea, but to have that kind of traffic into a small community, there's, there's got to be an answer and I just don't know what it is. But it's just a, it's a tough situation right now with, with people in the, in the county. I mean, things are getting tight, you know? Inflation's high, everything's going up and I know the price, the fuel has gone up. I know the pilots have gone up, the number of costs, and I know that you, I know the Airport Board has been working hard on getting a better agreement. I really do and I appreciate that 100%. I really do. But I'm just looking at the bottom line on this and if going into business, if I had this kind of proposal and I took it to the bank, I don't think I could get the money. I mean, and it's just, it's just, it's a difficult situation for, for our county, for our community, and I don't know how many people that are using that flight to Salt Lake are actually from Netroona County. How many of them are flying up here from Salt Lake and then back? Or how many of them are coming in from other counties and flying out of here? And yet the, you know, the citizens of the, of the county are the ones that are footing the majority of the bill. So I just have a difficult time with it and I just wanted to, to say that right up front so that everybody understands what I'm thinking. It's, we've got to do something to increase traffic in this community, in this county, to bring people in, bring businesses in and maintain those. But I have a hard time putting out much money into a, into a business that's not stationed out in Netroona County. It's just, you know, if we're, we talk about money and investing in our, in our communities and that's what I think we need to do is invest in our communities. And I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is on some of this stuff, but, but we do need to really focus on, on that and not, not spending this kind of money on, on something where it just keeps going up and I don't know where the end's going to be. That's, that's the bottom line is that, you know, if we, if we had a definite, a definitive end, it would help out a lot, but I just, I just don't see that with some of these big companies anymore. They're just, you know, they're dangling the apple out in front of us and you never can get a bite and sometimes that's, that's frustrating for us, so, but anyway.
Well, I'm going to put my two cents in. I do know there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes and trying to get other airlines to come in here. When you lose one airline out of two, you create a monopoly for the one that is left behind and the costs are going to go up for those travelers that, that end up, that use this airport quite often. So do I want to continue to pay this kind of money out? No, but are, are there individuals working very hard to try and get other airlines in here? Absolutely, and I know that for a fact. So hopefully we will see an end. We'll see another airline come in here and then if Delta decides they want to move on, then they can move on, but the last thing we want to do is create a monopoly and ultimately in the end, if you don't play by their rules, then we have no, no chance of having any, you'll, you just won't have an airline in here. So I'm agreeing with it right now. I want to make, see where it ends up with potentially getting another airline in here and I think that's the answer right at this point in time, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you. We have been in contact with the airport on this and have gotten quite a bit of background. I support the county entering into this agreement because I believe it will provide an economic benefit both short and long term for the county. This is not a forever agreement. This is a short-term agreement and yes, potentially it does cost us more than we'd like. We've been provided reasons for that. I think that we'll reevaluate and reassess things some months down the road and see where we're at. I think, I will hope that Sky West will be successful and that our actual expenditures on this will be far less than the maximum authorized under the MRG agreement. That's what happened up through approximately November of last year and we were pleasantly surprised by how little the county actually had to put into this, but I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, in that we, we don't want to create a monopoly, that it is very hard to get back airlines once they leave. It's very hard to recruit them, so I appreciate the efforts of our Airport Director and, and his board in, in working on all these issues and, and who knows? We might also end up with a larger plane from Sky West and Delta servicing Casper and I think that would help both the economics and our, our people that fly out of, out of Casper to Salt Lake.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
I was originally against doing this and I spent a lot of time in the last two weeks researching what has happened in this country as to why airlines need to, and needed and still need to have subsidies. The federal government started it back in 2000 and it got worse during COVID and what has happened is, is a lot of businesses and a lot of communities and a lot of taxpaying citizens have come forward to save the airlines. And we need to have a couple airlines in here. We really do. And the problem is, and they've addressed it, is, is once one leaves, it's like an ex-wife, she ain't going to come back. And so we don't want to, we don't want that to happen. So what this agreement is about is the state is also going to pay some money on this deal if, if the deal goes through. We're going to pay some money and they're going to pay some money and it's, and I'll tell you, it's a lot of money. It's $880,000 and our, our share is somewhere around 575,000 and then the state, if they approve it, it all has to be approved through the, you probably didn't know this, but the Wyoming Aeronautical Association that we have, we have that in the state. And I talked to them today and they're telling me how this is going on in a lot of communities in Wyoming. We just happen to be situated in the place we all love where we get a lot of snow and the wind blows and we got to deal with all of it. But this agreement is for six months to be renewed and we get to take a look and see how it works because they may not, if, if the planes are full and the people are going, they use less of the money. So I, 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 at one time felt like it was an old-fashioned Western holdup that, that they were doing, but I don't think that's true. I think we have to take a look at the cost of these airlines and what's happening and especially in our state because we, we just don't want to have Pony Express going in and out of here. So I think we have to give it a look and it's a hard look. I mean, we've got, we're not whining about it. We've got some hard decisions to make here, the five of us, and they're not easy. But I guarantee you, we're going to make the decisions and I'm going to vote for this and I hope you all support it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, then move forward with the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I just have, we'll move forward on that. Request a motion to remove the table of liquor license CC Cowboys Incorporated Doing Businesses Racks from 2/21/2023 from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we remove that from the table.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Nicolason. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the renewal of liquor license CC Cowboys Incorporated Doing Businesses Racks. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute, rules of the Netroona County Commission, and other applicable laws. May we have a report from Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to the county attorney for that report. So it's my understanding that initially the application was complete. Since then, the location where the application was, was intended to be, that facility was sold and the applicant does not have a long-term lease to cover the property. So as it stands right now, the application does not meet the minimal requirements to be granted.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the renewal of liquor license at CC Cowboys Incorporated Doing Businesses Racks to please approach the lectern.
Chairman Freel, members of the commission. My name is Randy Hall. I own Bunker One Real Estate, 550 North Poplar in Casper. I was appointed late yesterday afternoon as the receiver for this real estate, excuse me, for this liquor license and my charge is to try to preserve the value and, and sell the license and having it entered late yesterday, I didn't find out much about it until today. Understand that a renewal is coming up and, and then this transfer. I would either ask that you table this till your next regularly scheduled meeting or grant an extension of 30 days so I can properly assess the ramifications of doing the renewal and the transfer. And I entertain any questions?
Any questions by anybody from Mr. Hall? Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hall, thanks for being here tonight and understand that you've only been appointed receiver here very recently and you're not fully up to speed perhaps on, on all the intricacies, but my understanding is that the county is not a party to the court case in which the receivership was appointed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And my understanding is that you, as the receiver, aren't in a position tonight to provide the county with documentation or evidence that would support the issuance of this license. I think there's a defect in terms of a, either ownership of the property or a not, no signed lease agreement. Is that correct?
That's one of the reasons I'm asking for the extension.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the county attorney.
Okay.
What is the time element here to, to amend this application if it even can be amended? Because I, I was under the impression that all the time limits had run and, and there's no chance of putting on a public notice or anything of this, so I'd just like you to explain that.
So it appears that all of the, the time limits have run or, or it's impossible to make them, but I have not done an exhaustive search, so I, I can't say there's no way, but it, it doesn't appear very positive that there's a way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hall. Are there any others who wish to speak in favor of the renewal of liquor license?
Yes, my name is Sonny Pilcher and thanks for letting me speak in front of you tonight. When I applied for this, I had a lease and from all the badgering and, and everything that's gone on in the last couple of months, I lost that. And I've actually had paid rent ahead of time and now I'm being asked to leave early, even though I've paid the rent. So, you know, I found out about, I told Tracy last week that, you know, I had one and then all of a sudden Friday I didn't have one and so that's kind of put my time pretty well cramped here. I've gone out and found another place that I can lodge the, you know, in a commercial building, you know? You're not supposed to put it in a residential area, but I've found a commercial building that I can lease and house the, house the license there and in the meantime, try to get it sold. But like Mr. Hall said, I would probably take 30 days to do that because the, the 1st of April is when this runs out and we don't have time to put it in the newspaper, the required amount of time to get it transferred to the new address.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Pilcher? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of?
Judy Jones, 335 North 8 Mile. From all the years that I've worked in bars, I understood the liquor license are quite an expensive thing to have and I just want to stand up for Sonny. I think he's been through quite a bit and quite enough and I think the man deserves a chance to sell his liquor license and recoup his money and that's just all I feel about. If they were trying to take my liquor license and I'm going to get the sword into the stick, by God, I'd be fighting too. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of? All right, at this time I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the renewal of liquor license CC Cowboys Incorporated Doing Businesses Racks to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in opposition to? Right, there being no others to speak for or against the renewal of liquor license, I now declare the public hearing closed. Discussion? Commissioner North.
I just want to make sure that we do not have a complete application at this time. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have a complete application. I am missing some documentation, which is the lease.
Okay, so that...
So I do not have the required documents to accompany the application.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. That's, that's what I was asking for.
This is for the clerk. Did, did, did he actually bring another lease down to you at some point?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, no. Mr. Pilcher and I spoke on the phone last week. He said he had a lease. I expected him to bring it to me and as of right now, I haven't seen a lease of any sort.
So how do you view the status of that file then?
I would view the status of the application, it is an incomplete application without the required documentation, which is a lease needed.
So do you believe that you are not empowered by law to reissue that lease or that license?
I would say I'm not an attorney and I would defer to the county attorney for that, but I would say his renewal application is not complete at the date, from the, at the time this is being heard tonight.
I know that you at one time checked with the Liquor Commission too and you've done this for a long time, so we have to follow the law on this, don't we?
I would say, well, again, I'm not an attorney.
From what you've seen as a clerk?
From what I've seen as a clerk, I would say yes, you would need to follow the law.
And I, I guess I'd have the same question for the county attorney. We have to follow the law?
Always.
Thank you.
So do I have a motion, one way or another?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to deny the renewal of the retail liquor license for CC Cowboys Inc., DBA Racks.
I have a motion to decline by Commissioner Nicolason. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner North. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, it passes. I would request a motion to remove the table of liquor license Northern Dreams from 2/21/2023 from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we remove that from the table for discussion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner North, seconded by Commissioner Laird. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's been removed. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the renewal of liquor license Northern Dreams. Hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Netroona County Commission, and other applicable laws. May we have a report from Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to defer to Justin Smith, our billing official, for a report on this.
Mr. Smith?
Good evening. I'm not sure, I'm not certain what recommendation you're looking for from me. I have provided facts in terms of the situation with the current pending construction project. At this point in time, I'm still waiting for construction documents, so I don't have a recommendation one way or the other. I'm simply waiting for construction documents and if they can be produced, then I have, I see no reason to delay the renewal, but at this point in time, I still have not received construction documents and that's really where I stand with the, with the matter.
Any questions of Mr. Smith?
Do you think it's reasonable to wait, table this and wait until the next commission meeting to give them the opportunity to produce that information?
Yeah, I do. I believe it would be reasonable to provide one, one last extension.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we table the Northern Dreams liquor license until the 21st of March at our next regular commission meeting, at which time we can discuss it.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman, the, Mr. Rojas is here and I'd really like to hear from him before we do anything. If you could withdraw the motion temporarily.
So we'll hold that motion for a moment. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the renewal of liquor license to please approach the lectern.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Ed Rojas and we do all Northern Dreams and we've been trying to get the documentations that we need for the rebuilding, but every architect that we talk to here in town tells us that they cannot touch this project. That sentence came from somebody's mouth. I don't know who, but every single one of them tells me the same thing. I cannot touch this project.
So can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So we, we have a document where a architect... So we have a document where a architect, and I called him and talked to him, he said he did, he was willing to do this for you. I think the charge was $8,000. His last name is Daigle and I know you've talked to his partner. But he said he would do this and it might even be cheaper. It sounds expensive to me, but I, I'm just a lawyer, I don't charge much either. So, so, so I think you can get one now.
You think so?
I think if you go ask Mr. Daigle...
Because I have a list here, sir, of all of the guys that I've tried to communicate with.
Try Mr. Daigle. He says he's, he told me he would be...
Daigle?
Daigle, D-A-I, how's it spelled again?
Commissioner Laird, if I could, if I could step in. So Mr. Rojas, on last Thursday...
Yes, sir.
Justin Smith had contacted you last week and asked to set up the meeting that we promised that we would have with you after the last...
Yes, sir.
After our last commission meeting. At that point in time, you called back and left a voicemail for him referring him to talk to your daughter, Anna.
Either her or my son-in-law, either one.
Or Chris, correct. So then we had a conversation with Anna last Thursday.
Oh, you did?
And we did.
Right on.
And during that conversation, we told her that she needed to get in touch with Mr. Daigle. She said that she had never seen the email that had been sent to Chris, your son-in-law, correct?
Correct.
He had received an email numerous months ago from Brandon Daigle saying that he would in fact come out and do the project and it would cost $7,000 to $8,000. She talked to him that day, prior to us talking to her in the Zoom call itself, and she claimed that he could not get to it until April. Since then, right after that meeting, we called Brandon Daigle and talked to him. And in fact, he said he could get on it right away. He could not draw it up until April, but he could get the, the facts that he needed in order to get everything put together. And you could get a price hammered out and it would probably be cheaper than the $7,000 to $8,000, depending on exactly what was needed. Since then, your daughter has contacted us today, said that he's charging double that amount and that he can't get it until April, which is not true because we have talked to Mr. Daigle. And again, he said it would be topped out at $8,000. So my recommendation tonight would be that we table this for two more weeks, but you have got, you have somebody and you've had somebody for quite some time that would take on your project.
I did not know that, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, Chris, your son-in-law did and your daughter does and you have deferred Justin and the county to deal with your daughter and not directly with you. So we are now dealing with her at your request, but you guys need to communicate with each other. I'm going to ask for this to go for two more weeks until the 21st, but you're going to have to engage an architect. You guys have known this. You, you haven't got, you haven't drawn one building permit, but you've already built an addition or started an addition on the side of that building of which you needed a building permit for.
We did not know that because every time we talk to someone in the offices, they tell us that we own the place, we don't need no permit because we're just renovating.
So Justin Smith has also sent an email to Chris and to you, telling you exactly what you needed to do. That email was sent before and I had him last week resend everything to you that has absolutely everything you need to follow as far as the building permits go.
He sent it to me?
He sent it to your daughter at, because you have now instructed us to deal with her.
Yeah.
She has absolutely everything that you need to know about taking care of the building permits and fixing the problems that you have up there.
Okay.
So now we're at two weeks and I'm going to request to be tabled for two more weeks.
I appreciate it.
And you have got to show some sort of substantial movement towards getting an architect in place, getting your building permits purchased and moving forward from there.
All right.
Right now, nothing's been done and if, to me, you guys are not working very hard on, on keeping this.
Yeah, it's them, I've talked to them for sure and I didn't even know anything about this. I have not received no emails or nothing, so I didn't know anything about it, but I will talk to them and we will get an architect before two weeks.
Commissioner Nicolason?
Mr. Chairman, sir, what you're proposing is at a commercial location and it affects the health and safety of your employees...
I understand that.
And your, your guests. So this is different than a residence that you live in where you're doing some remodeling.
I understand that, sir.
You're changing exterior doors, the water, the gas lines and all of that where the service comes into your building. We've looked at the pictures. These are serious issues and, and I would strongly suggest that you retain Mr. Daigle with MOA Architecture, I think is the company.
M-O-A.
M-O-A. Retain him or someone. They can then handle the technical side of this for you and work with the building department and, and get you all the permits and all the green lights that you need. I had a question for the clerk and that is with respect to the liquor license application, have, have all of the requirements been met?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, the application is complete.
I'd like to finish by me.
Commissioner Laird?
Mr. Rojas, I gotta, I'm talking to you now, me and you were talking.
Okay, sir.
You've got to go do this, man, because if you don't, they're going to take your license away.
I understand. I did not know about this branding.
Hear me out though, you gotta, you gotta go hire Mr. Daigle. You've got to apply for a building permit through Justin Wilson. And you've got to do the permits he's sending because if you don't, you're going to lose that business. And I don't want to see, you know, I'm not, I'm not for your business, but it's your business and it's lawful and you've been doing it for a long time and I, and I know you're having your, your relatives help you with this and I know it could be a matter of money, but we're giving you every chance to keep that license. But if you come back here in two weeks and you don't have anybody lined up...
We will have someone.
I think they're going to take your license.
We will have someone, sir.
So just so you know, and you're saying this in front of all these people...
Yes, sir.
And the, and the chairman of the county commission, he's going to hold you to, to your word. I think you're a man of your word, so I hope you get this job done.
We will.
So...
Mr. Rojas, I just want to segue off of what Commissioner Laird just said. You, you can hire on whoever you want. You don't have to hire on Brandon Daigle. If somebody else comes along that fits the bill better, you have the right to do that.
I can use any architect.
But you need to get an architect involved now...
Okay.
To do exactly what needs to be done that, that Justin is telling you needs to be done.
Can I say something, sir?
Go ahead.
Every time I've talked to these guys, every one of them, I'll talk to them, they'll say, okay, let me talk to the building inspector so I can find out all what you need. Fifteen, 20 minutes later, they call me back with the same sentence, I cannot touch that project.
Well, we, we hear that. You said that. Now here's what I'm saying. I know Brandon Daigle will take your job.
Good, not going to talk to me.
So, so it's a matter of money, it's a matter of negotiating money and if you can't afford it, then you got to find somebody who can afford. But you can't leave here going, well, these guys won't take my job because we're stretching this for you. Seriously, we really are.
I hear you.
We don't want to see a man lose his livelihood if we can help him.
I understand. I've been in business for over 20 years and I don't want to go out of business.
We got to follow the rules too, just like they're making you follow the rules. We got all these rules with these ladies and they'll point them out to us if we don't follow them.
I know, they tell me all the time.
Please, please go, please go get this taken care of. Would you do that?
We're going to try our best.
All right.
I ain't going to make no promises, but I will promise that I'm going to try my best. If we can get her done, we will.
Well, you got to get her, this is Wyoming, you got to get her done.
Two weeks.
We're going to, we'll go through that officially here in a minute, but we'll ask to table it till the 21st. That's our, our next meeting.
I really appreciate your sir.
So you have two weeks.
Okay.
And I talked to Brandon myself, so I would call him.
I will, you said...
Your daughter has his number, she's got the email too.
Okay. We'll get her done.
So I would give her a call.
I will.
And if you lose it, you call me. I'm in a phone book, Dallas Laird, you can call me and I'll call Brandon Daigle and I'll help you with getting the meeting, but you got to get this done. If you don't get this done, they're going to take your license. That's it.
I understand. I don't want to lose that license I needed to stay here.
Yes, I know. So get her done.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
You too.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the renewal of liquor license for Northern Dreams? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to? All right, now declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion?
So moved. You want more than that?
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion.
I hereby move that we table the license consideration for Northern Dreams.
Commissioner Laird has made a motion to re-table Northern Dreams liquor license renewal until...
March 21st.
2023. Do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner North. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, it'll be tabled till the 21st. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the Resolution 3.23, Transfer of Funds. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute, rules of Natrona County Commission and other applicable laws. May we have a report from Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Resolution 03-23 represents a transfer of funds from the balance sheet cash reserve in the amount of $1,571,724 into various account lines outlined throughout the resolution. This transfer is for the wage increases that were granted in July of '22, in November, after the wage study in November of '22, and also the bonuses that were delivered in November of '22. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? All right, at this time I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of funds to please approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of? Those, at this time I'd wish those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of funds to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in opposition to? There being no one to speak for or against transfer of funds, I now declare the public hearing closed. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any discussion. I will move to approve the transfer of funds, so noted in Resolution 3-23.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nicolason, second by Commissioner Laird. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Open it up to public comment.
Do you want to ask Mike first? No. Oh, okay.
Public comment?
Public comment and it'll be limited to five minutes, so it'll be up on the screen. Took it away from you, Pat, they don't want you to talk. Oh, what's that? You can talk loud, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pat Sweeney, 951, North Hollywood. And just a couple of things. Number one, I would ask some sort of consideration. I know that it probably wasn't quite typical on Racks and Mr. Pilcher, but I can understand the dilemma that all of, all of the tracking has gone through, but in the same vein of taking livelihood away and the liquor license. I don't know what that remedy might look like with state statutes, but would ask that possibly there might be a remedy out there. I wasn't aware, so I didn't really have a discussion with Tom, Tom Montoya on that particular issue with the liquor division, but the, the next thing is, thank you for the transportation services agreement. It's critical that we maintain that. Delta Airlines, it may not seem critical to folks out there, but it, it is. If we're going to talk about economic development and the future of Natrona County, it's very critical. Lastly, I just, I know you're aware, but SLIB met last week because... With the ARPA funds, that, that was approved and it, that allowed SLIB to take the funds a little bit further. So the total award, I don't think, I'm past it, was $2,087,359, which included your $850,000 and Midwest, Edgerton each put in $50,000 and then Contango also put in $50,000 commitment. So I, we really appreciate, I know the communities do, but in particular, I appreciate, the governor had indicated to me in late October that we needed skin in the game. I didn't know exactly what that meant, but this commission, the previous commission and previous staff worked very hard on that and it's much appreciated. So, next steps, I think the mayor of Midwest, that was the last minute consideration also. They're already gearing up with the joint powers board and trying to get things moving as quickly as possible. So with that, stand for any questions, but that's, that's what I wanted to thank you.
Pat, I would assume that, that extra million dollars that, that was saved on that helped out another community and it gave a little bit more money for SLIB to dole out to other projects.
That, that's correct and I don't know exactly which ones, but there was a lot of negotiations right there at SLIB and, but we had unanimous support from all members. So that was great.
Pat, I appreciate what you've done for this. I know you've worked hard for it and I know several other people have too and keeping it in the forefront and it was disappointing last fall when it didn't make it through and I'm glad it made it through this time because I haven't talked to anybody that doesn't agree with the fact that we need to make sure that those people have water up there and this is the only way to get it done.
So, appreciate that.
I would like to say the people in Midwest and Edgerton are my people. So thanks for helping them.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I didn't want to waste too much time on Sonny still, but I did, I do agree with him being able to sell his own liquor license. Okay, I look forward to seeing you guys on Friday morning. Got my ducks in a row, I think I got everybody I need to show up. I'm disappointed in you and you and Melanie for not being part of this. I'm disappointed in you, and you, and Melanie for not being part of this, because I know you guys sit and meet with hospital guys that sell you tongue depressors, they get five of yous, how come I can't? All right, secondly, I wanted to bring up the airport deal. I think you should have asked us if you're gonna go drop in $880,000 to keep a flight to Salt Lake back and forth, one day a week, or one, once a day kind of thing. I think $880,000 for six months is a bit too steep for our pockets at this point. I mean, if they leave, big deal, you can go to Denver, you can fly to Denver, and you can fly all over the world. It's not a big deal, I've been pricing them, and I looked at all of this stuff, and it just, it doesn't make any sense, because this is like, let's say, it was 453 in 2021, now it's 880. I know gas has gone up, and I know oil's gone up, and tires gone up, because I'm in business for myself too, but I'm not willing to give, prop up, what do you call it? A business. I don't want to give them more subsidies. I'm done with that, just like I'm done with the wind tower subsidies and the solar panel subsidies, where if they can't make it on their own, why is it up to us to foot the bill all the time? I mean, hey, can I borrow a million dollars, please, for my business? You know, just write me a check, guys, you know, or how about any one of these guys out there and their businesses, they suffered all through the pandemic. You want to write them a check too? I did a little research on the windmills and 808, or what is it, $280 million this boondoggle out in Bar None's gonna make, or supposedly bring in $37 million. Well, I did some research, and I'll leave all that for you guys. Look it over. That's just part of what's on the internet of how many ways cities, towns, counties and states are being bled to death on this green energy boondoggle, because that's what it is. Ninety percent of everything that goes into a solar panel into a wind tower comes from where? Can we say it? China. And what are we doing right now? We're picking a war with China. So what's gonna happen when this stuff is no longer available? By the way, cobalt is dug by little four and five-year-olds in the Congo. That goes into all these transistors and circuit breakers and microchips that go in your phones and stuff. Some to consider. I've never been a green energy kind of person, you know? I dig, I'm oil and gas. That's what made my family eat, that's what made my husband's family eat, that's what drives your car today. But the point of this stuff here is, right now, even over at the Casper landfill, did you know we're the largest landfill in the state of Wyoming? And we're the only ones that accept wind towers? We don't have any solar panels there right now, but I talked to the gentleman over there, and he said we have between 1,500 and 1,800 wind towers in the landfill as we speak. That they just increased the land mass over there so that they could add some more to it, and each wind blade is 26, here it is, 1,500 to 1,800 as of today. There's no current recycling done. We're the only landfill. They get paid $75 a ton for each blade, there's three blades on each, they weigh exactly 26 tons each, and that's $1,800 each, times three, so they're making about $3 million on putting these land, these wind towers in there. And we're not even talking about where that money goes, if it supports the landfill, I'd be interested to know if it does. And I guess my point is, and on this, guys, I'm sick of it. I don't want to see one more damn dime of my money go into a wind tower, a solar farm, or anything else until you open up my coal mines, my natural gas mines, and put our boys back to work. Thank you.
Mr. Laird?
Thank you, Chairman Frill, members of the commission. Was hoping to speak before you guys voted on the airline subsidies, but my comments would be, you've already passed it and voted on it, sounds like it's temporary next time this comes up. You know, right now, we have record number of food bank pantries in town that people are really having trouble right now, and, you know, they're getting coerced effectively with their tax dollars to subsidize an airline. And, you know, it is, it's corporate welfare, if you want to really name it for what it is. I think that we need to be careful with this. I don't think anybody, you know, you talked about competition, I'm with, I'm with you all the way, competition is what makes things work really well in the free market, and, you know, I'm a benefit of the low airline fees, I can afford to buy an airline ticket, a lot of these people that are subsidizing this can't, and they can't afford to, and they can't afford to fly. So I encourage you to take a good, hard look at this the next time it comes up, and I don't think that it's a path we should be going down for sure. If it was a fully subsidized airline when there was only one monopoly, I don't think anybody would probably want to fly on it, because that's what happens when you go too far down that path. So I appreciate the time up here. Congratulations to all the new members here, and have a good night. Thank you.
Congratulations on being a fine senator.
Thank you.
There you go.
Chairman Frill and the rest of the board of county commissioners, Bill Alomand, Midwest, 28033, Southeast, 259. I do, I want to thank you guys. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for bringing that water line to Midwest. I do thank you, and I also, I see he's gone, I thank Pat Sweeney. Pat worked hard on it, Pat helped me on it, and it was, we got it done, and I thank you for that. But I also really disagree with the subsidy on this airline, and I wish we could have had a little public comment before it started. The people in my district, part of them can't afford it. People in Midwest can't afford it. People in North Casper can't afford it. People at Bar None don't need it. It's either you can't afford it, or you don't need it. I just think that we should not be subsidizing near as much as we are. I look at the water line, that's not a subsidy, that's what we need to do, that's infrastructure. And I think we need to do more infrastructure and less subsidies. Thank you, guys, very much, and I do appreciate it. Any questions?
Mr. Allen, man, actually, I do want to talk to you about something. So the water line itself, your previous mayor, when we talked about the water line like about a year ago or something like that, I asked him how many users were on that line. He told me that you guys could not let it, allow anybody to tap into it, because at that time, there was still money owed on the line.
Correct.
And I think it was like $80,000, it was, it wasn't a large amount of money. But my understanding is that is paid off now.
Yes, sir.
Are there plans for, you talk about infrastructure, are there plans for your area up there to allow people now to tap into that line, which obviously would then, you would be selling water at wholesale, or selling it at retail, getting it wholesale, but are there plans for you to be able to tap into that? So if there are future problems with the water line, at least there would be a fund created there from your users, and it allows some users out there, and in particular, I think of BB Brooks, because I believe your line starts just to the south of there, but potentially putting a water station out there, or, because there just is no, they all have to haul their water, so.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman Frill. I have not talked to the Joint Powers Board yet, but I want to do exactly that. I want to put a station, a credit card station, somewhere around the Ormsby Road that would serve BB Brooks, it would serve Homa Hills and Antelope Hills. And then it would bring us in more revenue, because I'm not sure what we're gonna use yet. Commissioner North has come up with a really good liner plan, which I like, but it's not my decision. My decision was, or my part of this project was to help them secure the funds, and because of you folks, we've got that done. But yes, I am very much in favor, right there at the Ormsby exit somewhere.
And I ask that question not to, not to find a way to create revenue by any means, but I think it's a win-win situation, because you have people that have no access to water at all, or their access to water is driving in the mills or driving to Evansville to fill their tanks up and bring them back. So to me, it just makes sense that you have the opportunity to do it now. So again, not to create revenue, but simply it would help out on both sides.
Mr. Chairman, absolutely. It, like you said, it is a win-win. Serve the people of BB Brooks, Homa Hills, Antelope Hills, and a few ranchers around, like, I haul my water, so it would be an option for me also. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
A really nice young man came down here and asked us for $33,000 for fire department uniforms and equipment up in Midwest and Edgerton. Do they need that?
Yes.
Sounds like they needed it.
That would have been Riley DeWitt. And, you know, when we built our fire station, it wasn't on grant money, it was a loan that we had to pay back to the county commission, and we do need the fire equipment, and I believe the equipment you're talking about is for range fires, is that correct?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes. We do need that, that equipment, because in reality, that's most of what they've done, is the range fires. I, in the last three, four years, I know of only one house that caught fire, and that was in Gas Plant. Most of the firefighting they do is in the country, grass fires.
Well, we want them to be safe.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, it comes out, it's kind of interesting being on this commission about everybody who comes down here and asks for money. And we have a little money, you know, taxpayers take care of one another in this county, and we really look into these matters.
And I appreciate.
Before we vote.
Yes.
You know, and so we know some of them will be disagreeable, and some of them will be agreeable, but we have to be really cognizant of what's really needed at times in this community that some people may not recognize, and that applies to the airport, to the fire department up in Edgerton, to the pipeline, to all kinds of other stuff we're gonna be considering, so I hope you think about that and keep us in your prayers.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And I will.
Bill, I do want to thank you for all the work that you did on the water line, too, because I know you did a lot behind the scenes and lobbying with the people that were on the SLIB board and working with that and trying to get that information out and everything else, so I do want to let you know that I appreciate everything that you did for that too, and taking care of the people up there, because that is something that's very important, it's been on the front line for a long time, and I'm glad we're finally moving forward with it.
Well, thank you, sir, and I have been working on it, I was working on it a year before I was elected. And I thank you for that comment.
You bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, staff, my name is Dana Stone, and I'm a past board member of the Wyoming Lions Foundation. A while back, the Casper Lions Club gave ownership of the Allen H. Stewart's camp up on the mountain to the foundation. They, at that time, they also had an agreement with the commissioners for about, I guess about 16 acres, that about half the building's happened to sit on. And Lion Phil Hines, who's the president of the Casper Club, and myself, came to the county commissioners this past October, and I know that you've changed hands a little bit up here in NeTrona County. And the direction was given that the lease agreement would be changed from the Lions Club of Casper to the foundation. Since that time, the county attorney, no longer is the county attorney, I believe, here in NeTrona County, and the current county attorney is working very diligently on getting this passed, and I was just coming up to visit to see where that might be in progress. Sorry.
Mr. Chair, there are a lot of things in progress, so you're in progress.
Because we've been working at it for so long, just kind of curious as to maybe a timetable, two, three years, six years, a couple months? I know you're busy and it's not a number one priority, so it's okay.
I would like it if you'd check back in maybe four weeks.
Okay, that's fine.
She's the only one up there, she's got an assistant coming on in two weeks.
I'm sure she's.
So you don't want to be, you don't want to be too hard on her, she's working pretty hard.
No, just worry about it, no, because I talked to her on the phone, so, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There you go. There we go. Too tall for these mics. Mr. Chairman, Dan Sabroski, Commissioners, Dan Sabroski, 1639 Palomino Avenue, Bar None. Just for your guys' consideration, and again, it would have been, it would have been nice to have some public comment on the subsidies of the airlines, but just, just a word of caution, as we, it's a problem that we've dealt with at a national level, or state level with the Wyoming Business Council, and here at this level, government is getting too involved with our businesses. We're picking winners and losers, it's a march into socialism, and when government runs businesses, which I'm not saying the subsidy puts us there yet, but that's where we're headed, if we continue down this, at some point, the airline comes and says, we can't even operate, so then we take it over. And when does government do a good job of running a business? Never. I mean, we see with the event center, we see it with the ski resort, so as, in the future, as you look to renew these agreements, consider that, let the free market play itself out. It may be ugly, it may hurt, we may lose an airline, but it will fix itself in the long run, so take that into consideration in the future.
Thank you, Dan.
Rose Mary Sabon, 9460 West Zero Road. I agree with Judy, it's very wrong of you guys to not meet with us and go over this land use plan. And I also would like to ask the people in the audience, I wrote a speech on your behalf, may I have your permission to read it for you? The United States of America is a republic, and the rights belong to and are held by the individual. Our governmental system as a democracy is entrusted with the care of the many rather than the few. Our constitution limits our government intervening constantly on behalf of the weak and greedy, conversely promoting more weakness and greed. The preamble of our constitution states, "We, the people, there is no I." You are not employed by the people to vote your conscience, your job is to vote as your constituents say. We, the people, have a civic duty and obligation to involve ourselves in the affairs of our government, a government of the people, by the people, for the people. When you show disrespect and disregard for what we, the people, say to you, when you vote for the me, myself, and I, you create apathy amongst the people, and you are circumventing our. our rights. The land use plan is the result, in your beliefs, that you need uniform code of conduct to cover behavior that is not uniformed. The people are not relinquishing their constitutional rights to govern themselves in that which is their own private property. Like our government, zoning is to remain limited to the management of only that which creates a financial burden on its people. When we choose security over opportunity, we are given chains and we are secured. We, the people, are still demanding that this current land use plan be nullified until it fulfills the rights of the people. Thank you.
You'll get your turn there, Mr. Gerard.
Good evening.
Hi, Randy.
Uh, Chairman, County Commissioners, no disrespect, but I'm going to talk to the audience. There's a few things, plethora of things these County Commissioners are doing. I can un- cannot understand all the things, all the problems we have in Netrona County, let alone in the state of Wyoming or the United States. And I thank you. How many of you, raise your hand, in the past week went to the Netrona County Library? How many of you in the past month went to the Netrona County Library? One? How many of you in the past year have gone to the Netrona County Library? Quite a few. How many of your family members gone to the Netrona County Library in the past year?
He doesn't want us to build a new library.
Quite a few, or two, four. Out of about twenty people. Now, I said the plethora of things you guys are doing and the eight hundred thousand dollars you're giving to the airlines. How many of you in the past week flew to Salt Lake? How many of you in the past month flew to Salt Lake? The past year? Two. How many of your family members flew to Salt Lake? One. This is a small group of people, maybe twenty people, but they represent a lot of people because so many of us in our younger years were out there trying to survive, make money, take care of our families. Now that we're a little gray in the beard, we have time to come to these meetings a little bit more and try to understand what you guys are going through. I hope you guys really have a, and I said this a couple of months ago, when I asked the board to, uh, postpone a vote until the new board came upon. I think you guys, uh, need to, you, I know with some of you, I haven't gone to coffee with you in quite a few years. But how many of these people have you gone to coffee with and say, what is troubling you about what's going on in our government? How we're spending our money? Not everybody can come, but how many times have you gone to a restaurant, sat down with a group of guys that you don't know and just ask them that?
I do it frequently.
Well, you have time.
I eat breakfast.
And you're getting less time with the gray hair.
Yeah, that's true, but I do it. I go to the cheese-
Well, that's one. But I mean, we, we should all have conversations with the community, not just with twenty people that are really involved in certain details, certain things that are close to their heart. You know, there's probably thousands of Netrona County people sitting at home from a hard day's work and not knowing what's going on. I did not know what's going on, and it's unfair for them, but they are trying to make a living. And you have to spend the money like them. Thank you.
Randy?
Yes, sir.
First of all, could I put, just have you give your name and address for the record?
My name is Randy Bjorklin. I live at seventy-nine forty-five West Riverside Drive. I've been a resident of Netrona County for forty-three years. I served two terms in Vietnam. I was a Casper police officer, retired from the Casper Police Department, and now I'm a grandfather and just trying to make the, what little I have in retirement, keep my house.
So if I can just add one, one comment to what you're saying, is that I agree with you that, uh, we most definitely should take the opportunity to sit down with people and talk to them. Just so you know, that, just in the small amount of time that I've been sitting here, um, what we're trying to do is change the way that some of these things are done here, and we're getting more information. Information didn't seem to be really getting put out on things that we're doing, um, onto the website, and so we're trying to push that information out through that, through social media, so I know it's not sitting in a restaurant and having coffee with somebody, which is a great idea, and I'll start picking that up. But from where it was before and information that was being put out to where it is now, I think we're on a, on a good path of trying to keep the, the citizens more informed of what's going on. And another good example would be Christie Turner, who was just in here a moment ago from planning, taking advantage of a home show coming up, and she'll be up there for three days so people can come up and she can answer a bunch of questions, and I'm sure people have. So we're trying to change the way that things are being done. So I hear, I hear what you're saying, but there are changes being made.
I appreciate that, and you know, a couple of months ago when I came up here, um, people were having a hard time just getting the information that you guys were looking at. Getting copies from your office was almost impossible. You get them maybe that afternoon, why can't we have them sooner? Just a thought.
It's a good point, though.
You know, and then the other thing is-
I'll, 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 you can answer on it. So we should have it, uh, hammered out. Randy brought to my attention that with the Fourth of July, I don't want to really put it out there so that everybody jumps online and takes-
And take my spot?
Takes your spot, but the, the way we have it set up through the county right now is that if you want to get a parking or a camping site, let's just say you're going to do it over the Fourth of July.
Full hookup.
Full hookup.
Okay.
You have to get on at midnight, ninety days in advance?
Ninety days in advance. So if you want to-
At midnight. You have to be there at midnight to be the first one to get in. And so that's if you wanted it on the Fourth of July. And then if you want it on the Fifth of July, the next night, you got to be up at midnight and be the first one to get in there, and you have to do that every day. That, that doesn't seem efficient, doesn't seem right, because literally somebody can get on the third, go on the fourth, and they don't get it, and then they get it the fifth and sixth, and they got to tear the campsite down and move for one day and then go set back up again. So we're working on it. I don't know, I have an answer for you tonight, but we are working on it. Michael is aware of it, and, uh, hopefully that'll be changed so that you can actually get on and-
Well, you know, like I told you on the phone, you know, I, we travel a little bit, and I can go anyplace and get a camping spot, you know, call in and get a camping spot, uh, for a week, two weeks, whatever, and I have the same camping spot. This is ridiculous that you have to call in one day to get that day, like the first, and then you have to call in at the second time, like ninety-one days or nine, or eighty-nineties, I'm sorry, to get the second. Then you have to call in eighty-seventh day before the fourth to get the third. It's, why not just make it simple for you guys, for everybody, and say, here's a box, and maybe charge a little bit more for that box? You know, I, I would be willing to pay a little bit more to, you know, to know that I have that spot for four days or three days. And it's, this is ridiculous to say that nobody knows how to work a computer or the system. We have to have somebody in the county that knows something about computers and work in that system. If not, go to paper. You can do it by paper and say, hey, you have these four days, three days, whatever. But, like I said, you guys got a plethora of stuff you deal with, and I'm amazed, and thank you for doing it. I know you're doing the best you can. God bless.
Thank you, Randy.
I'm sorry. Mike, tell him what you just told me, Mr. Bjorklin. Right?
My understanding was you could book multiple days.
Is that right?
I don't know what, a week ago, two weeks ago I called you?
Yeah.
That was two weeks ago. They changed.
Let's throw monkey brains in it.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Greg Gerard, a fourth generation rancher, four thousand Horse Ranch Creek Road. Uh, Ms. Maines? Is that, did, did you get the pictures I had sent?
Yeah.
In the email, is there a way to show those or no?
Chairman, I got the first email.
Okay.
Then we were already in here and started when that second email came through.
Okay.
So I'm going to have the first set.
That's fine. As, if you guys would entertain us for a minute, we, uh, what I'm here to visit with you tonight about is I'm coming not to beat you up, we're here for hat in hand. There's a lot of snow here in town, not so much, and it, and it's, it's deceiving because you, you come into Casper, but once you get outside of this Casper realm, and I'm sure you guys have all received the emails and pictures and things like that, and people are mad and they're cussing Mike, and I, I wouldn't want Mike's job, no way, but, uh, hats off to him for, for triumph. But, uh, a lot of that snow is deep, and as Mike had talked about, uh, those, the county roads, this, this was us, we just came off the Bucknum Road, and you can see kind of to the right. That's, that's snow to give the depth perception, there's no grass, and we had a good grass year this year. So the county roads, and then if, as you scroll through these pictures, I can, I can kind of explain. There's no, that's, that's looking at Casper Mountain from the top of the Divide at, uh, Bucknum Thirty-three Mile Road off into Hemmingway Draw, and that, that's the Bucknum Road, that's the county road, that's what Mike's having to deal with, and you guys may have already seen these, but those, we're lucky because this road is, they've been able to maintain it. We've got a plow, we've got, we, we're fighting at the best we can, but these cows are under so much stress, and sheep, and livestock of any sort. Uh, this is the road, the, the road that used to be a county road coming into our place, uh, just off I twenty-five at exit two-ten. So we're talking all the way from just south Midwest, all the way over. Uh, that's, that's the fence, and that's where it's drifted. The folks out there that right now, say, let's say Poison Spider area, they needed help yesterday, two weeks ago, January fifteenth. The Blizzard of Forty-Nine that they talk about, when the National Guard had come in and things like that, you know, neighbors helping neighbors, and I, I understand it's, it's a money thing, I can appreciate, uh, Governor Gordon offering assistance with trying to get some disaster relief, but that's kind of an after-the-fact thing. And with these cows, this, this is coming across the, the Forgy Ranch heading to BB Brooks. This is just north of Ormsby. I, I step off my snow machine and it's to my knees. Uh, hopefully this can kind of give you, you an idea of what, what, just us, what we're up against, but those, those cows that these other people have, and we're getting to these cows, but they're still, we're losing cow, we're going to lose calves, we're going to lose cows, we've lost some cows, but we're, we're pretty blessed to have the equipment that we have, but other people that are back in the sticks, where, where the, you guys are trying to get to them and things, it's, it's, they're having to stand there, and it's heartbreaking, having to see their, their cows get that watery-eyed look and they're gannet up and they lay down and they won't get up, and they're trying to carry sacks of, of cake to them and feed and supplement, and you can't get some of them hay because you can't give them hay if they don't have water, and there's so much science to it. One gentleman has got his cows that they've, they've gone up in the trees, and somebody said, oh, well, thank gosh, they've got some good shelter. Well, they get up in those pine trees and they eat those pine needles, and that causes them to abort their calf. So, and, and as far as numbers go, I, I know you gentlemen are, are meeting with, with people and, and trying to push, and, and they, you've got a way, the, the, this costs that and that costs this, but just please keep in mind, you know, the minerals, tourism, and agriculture, that's Wyoming. Agriculture, two billion dollars in receipts to Wyoming last year from, according to a report from the, from the University of Wyoming. I understand you guys have seven hundred and seventy-five miles of roadway. Uh, what we are looking at, at trying to do is, as you guys are well aware, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir here, but if, if maybe the public will, what you need from us, we, we have called, I've spoke with Representative Alamand, he spoke before the legislature, and, and kind of had the governor excited to do something, and that was last week, and there's still nothing, nothing that they, these people are seeing, and it's, it's, it's easy to tell them help's coming, but what would it take to get a declaration of disaster for, for Netrona County taken care of? What, what, and, and I'm just kind of, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, to let you know, some of these people are watching on YouTube and that, and they're, they're, we've, they're mad, I understand, they're heartbreaking. As far as paying for cows that die from the disaster aid, that will help them later on, but the genetics in a lot of these guys' cows and sheep and things like that, that's, that's, you don't replace it with money. So, uh, in closing, we're, we're hoping that they would bring the National Guard in. Uh, another thing that they're looking at is when this snow goes off, there's going to be some flooding, and then you guys are going to have culverts washed out, things like that. I'm not an engineer, but, but we all know how, what this severity is. Uh, it would, it would sure help if, if possibly you could make a statement of what is going on, what we can do as, as the public to help you guys to, to get resources in here. Chris Wolf with, uh, I believe Emergency Management was very, he's, he's trying, but it's, it's, I, we understand, politics, it takes time, but this is an emergency, this is, uh, you know, I, I don't come, I come with full respect, but we need, we need something done, and it had to be done January fifteenth. Of course, it's not snowing, and that was one thing Chris Wolf had mentioned, was, well, you haven't got much snow, well, the wind blows. That trail was blown in the next day, and that, it, that's just the, the nature of it. If we get any more snow, it's, yeah. But other than that, I, I appreciate your time, but if you, if, if you could help, the, I mean, it's, it's disaster time, I, I don't know how else to explain it to you.
Mr. Ger- Gerard, if I could, I'll come back in a minute, Dallas. Um, so, uh, we have had discussions today with Emergency Management here in, in, in Netrona County, and they have already reached out. Uh, Converse County, we know that we have equipment that is ready to mobilize.
Okay.
We're actually having a meeting as soon as we're done here tonight to sit down with Mike and figure out where the priorities are and where that equipment needs to be. Um, once Emergency Management gets their formal declaration, I'm hoping in the next day or so, as long as we have an agreement here, um, once that's in place, they'll mobilize that equipment and bring it up here, and then, uh, it could be strategically placed where it needs to go, and, and we're hitting the, the top priority areas first, the ones that we know are the worst off right now and working our way from there. Part of the other problem that we have is Mike has had a lot of equipment that's gone down on him because, I mean, these guys have been working around the clock. Part of the other problem that we have is Mike has had a lot of equipment that's gone down on him because, I mean, these guys have been working around the clock.
Oh, I.
Nonstop.
Where's Mike at? Well, you don't have a black eye. We, we appreciate you, that's, it's, and I understand, you guys are getting hate letters and everything. And it's just that they're, the, the ranching community is pretty passionate. And we've got to stand there and watch four generations of, of livestock die before them because they can't get through that. That's heartbreaking.
Yep, we, we totally understand where you guys are at, absolutely. And I've talked to the numerous ranchers every day, you know, trying, trying to explain to them that we're doing what we can do with what we have, first of all, and second of all, the best way that we can approach it with bringing in assistance. And I think we're finally at that point that we can get assistance brought in here and, and start making a dent in some of this stuff. But again, and, and it's not an excuse, but we've lost a V blade and a couple of our blowers have gone down. And, I mean, we're at a point where we're very limited on the equipment, the equipment we have. We're just trying to get it to the, to the spots, not only that that equipment would be useful in, 'cause some of these, I mean, face it, some of these drifts, some of this equipment's not even gonna touch this stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, and with the wind blowing, it turns it into ice, which creates another problem. So, but as soon as this is done, I mean, if you want a statement, the statement is, we're working with Emergency Management. As soon as this is done, hopefully we'll have a plan in place and you'll hopefully start seeing some things happen in the next few days.
We appreciate that. If, uh, one question is, have we, can we, I know we have some of the great contractors right here in Casper with big equipment. Can we outsource to some of them?
We can, but at the same time, we're looking at, we'd prefer to go the route with Converse County because of the fact the cost of it, uh, is a lot less. So we're not gonna spend as much taxpayer dollar on bringing equipment, mutual aid in here to help us get it done. Because I don't even remember what the cost was, but it, it, I mean, it's substantially more to have private contractors do it because it, it's a government job, and they're coming in here and they're gonna try and get as much money as they possibly can out of it. So if we can use mutual aid assistance and have them come in, first of all, the first twelve hours doesn't cost us anything. Now, when I say that, it comes from Converse County, where the, the clock starts when they leave the yard. So we're not getting anything for our first hour, hour and a half, whatever it might be, or our last hour, an hour and a half. But you got that time in the middle that's not costing us to have them out there. But once we exceed that twelve hour period of time, then the clock starts, the dollars start rolling for us.
If, if they could match what Converse County is doing, could we get maybe double the, is that a possibility for, say, if oft et al? Or, I, I don't know any oft et al, but if someone like that came in that has that type of equipment and said, we can, we can give you a week's worth at that rate, would, would you guys entertain something like that?
I, I'm not gonna say that no, we wouldn't. Uh, the other thing we gotta keep in mind too is that any equipment that breaks, and it breaks, Mike will be able to tell you that we've had a lot of things break. But even with Converse County coming in here, whoever comes in, if somebody comes down from Teton County to help us out, any of that equipment that breaks or gets stuck, we're on the clock for it, we're paying for it, that's money out of our pocket. So, um, so on the private side of having contractors come in here, I guess the biggest question is, do they know what they're doing?
True.
Because if they go out there and break equipment, are we paying for it? If they get stuck or tear something up, are we paying for it? Whereas we know that if we're bringing in people that do this for a living from other counties, they know what they're doing.
Perhaps so. And I, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
Perhaps from a, a legal standpoint, could you just ta- draft a type of contract that would exclude that? If you guys wanna come in, this, this is the rate, just as if, like YDOT. I know there, there are subcontracts, I think some of the cities are, are the same way when they have equipment. If, if they're paving a street and the roller breaks down, they've already bid that type project. I, I'm just trying to give, give ideas and.
And I'm not gonna tell you that it can't be done. Because this weekend I went from Laramie to Cheyenne, and I passed three semi trucks from a private organization that were obviously coming down I-80 from over in Rock Springs. And they've got a lot worse problems over there than what we have. But they were all headed back with their equipment, so I'm not gonna say it can't be. I mean, that's something that we just need to talk to legal and, and find those individuals that have that equipment.
Okay.
I have a comment, or a question. Mr. Gerard, good evening.
How are you?
I'm not too bad. Um, I have a couple of things, because we're, we, we did talk about this and, and the money that we're gonna hear from Mike about how much all this is gonna cost, 'cause we do wanna hire equipment and get equipment and find equipment and get it put to work. Um, and here it is, March. So, we weren't prepared for this war. I don't think anybody was.
No, sir.
And so, you know, I was born and raised here, like you were. And when I was younger, you know, I kinda liked these big snowstorms, I don't much care for them anymore. But what I brought up earlier today was, we, we really need a battle plan for the future too.
True.
This just isn't, you know, this is Wyoming, it's gonna blow every year, it's gonna snow every year, and it's gonna be different winds and different amounts of snow, and it may be worse next year.
Yeah.
For all I know, I mean, we don't know. So we're sitting here, how do we solve this long-term problem? And I'm not asking you for an answer tonight. But how do we solve certain areas that I've been told about? That by the time they get the dozer out of there and turn it back around, it's been blown in again.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping all of the ranchers and everybody out there can help me get a battle plan for the future now. Yes, we gotta do something now, and I wanna do something now, and I don't know what it's gonna cost us. And, uh, but I think we, we're gonna dig up the money somehow.
True.
Because we know what you're suffering from out here. I, I, I haven't been out to see your ranch in a long time, I'm glad you brought the pictures.
It, it's, it's scary because as we were, we had a flood in, in Dad's, Mom and Dad's house. And going through some old pictures, I'd found some pictures from when they were having to do the airdrops.
Yeah.
Forty-nine.
Oh, yeah.
And same, same thing, but it was, uh, you know, the convoys and the things that they, they went in and, and it, it is, it's gonna cost some money, of course.
And, and we can't speak for the governor, the National Guard. I know Commissioner North, uh, thought about that and made some calls. But, you know, every county's basically about to have to take care of their own, which I hope that we're able to do and figure out, because we gotta find guys to, to run this equipment. And, you know, it's, it's hard finding employees. We can, I can give you all kinds of excuses that, that's slowing this party down. But what I wanna do is not have to be sitting here again next year giving you more excuses. I'd like to have a battle plan for next year. I think it's as equally as important as fighting the next two months, because the next two months, we're gonna get more snow and more wind and more deaths on, down on your property.
True.
And we wanna help, help with it. And here we are, and here you are.
And any, any amount of, any amount of try, I mean, that, that gives hope. So that, that, if, if, whatever, you know, we, we appreciate it, we do. We're, we are lucky to, to be in the position where we're at. We've got most of our cows in places where we can feed and get to them and things like that. But the, the heartbreaking stories from some of these people, and they're, they're people that wouldn't ask for help. They're people that are humble and, and don't want, they hate to come to town, but here it is, they, they've gotta ask for help. And, and it may have been asked for too late, but, uh, I tell you, I think, I think that, uh, if, if we could get through the red tape, anything's better than nothing. Uh, if, if you don't have any other questions for me, I, I, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
You know where you can find eight hundred and eighty thousand?
I knew you were gonna say that.
Well, I think that would be a lot better use of that money than what you're doing with it.
Well, I think we can handle both issues. We're not, we're not robbing from Peter to pay Paul.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go, uh, Commissioner comment, Commissioner Nicolason. Do you have anything? Okay, Commissioner Laird?
What was the question?
Just Commissioner comments, do you have anything you wanna say?
You know, I, I just want the people of Natrona County to know that we take all this very seriously. We don't just come in here and decide to do something, uh, shirttail wise. And we know how much money we got in the bank, and, you know, my grandma, she always told me, you better not spend that rainy day money until it really rains. But you gotta take care of your people. So there's people who fly around, gotta take care of them. There's people who have cattle ranches and a lot of snow. And I happen to know our crews are working overtime. They're just men, they're, they're good men, but they're working overtime, seven days a week. We got it, we got the equipment that normally can handle most things. But this is like having an atomic bomb dropped on you, just weren't ready for it. 'Cause I, I, I think maybe everybody was hoping it'd get to be like Phoenix around here and be seventy degrees this time of year, but it isn't gonna happen. And, uh, that wind isn't gonna shut down. And Wyoming is still here.
Commissioner North?
Cordell, I see you hiding in the back, back there. Thank you for coming, he's our newest member of the Parks Board. Wanted to say thanks for coming. Um, I do wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Um, it's been a challenging year already, and we've still got a lot, lot of year to go. Um, but, uh, I do wanna thank everybody because your voices are, are important to us. I've had more, more emails and more phone calls in the last two months than I've had in the last two years before that, so. And we do listen, and I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that. And some things we don't have answers for. And they, these storms, um, you know, that's, it's a, it's a challenging event when I, when I realize that out of the last two months, that sixty-six percent of the days were classified as blizzards, or sixty-six percent, yeah, so forty, forty days out of that, out of the last two months were classified as blizzards because of the weather conditions that we had. Um, and yet we don't have enough snow to, to meet the FEMA requirements for disaster. It's kinda, it's kinda goofy. Something needs to change as far as that goes. There needs to be a different calculator as far as what, what's actually out there, as far as what we can do to get help. And, uh, I know Mike and his crew has been working seven days a week since first of January. And, uh, there's only so many of them, and there's only so much equipment, there's an awful lot of miles of road out there and a lot of wind and a lot of snow. So, um, I do appreciate everything he's done, you know, to try to keep things open. And I just, I just ask people that you be patient, you know, and, uh, fortunately, winter's not gonna last until July this year, I hope. And so, uh, at some point, it's gonna melt and we can start all over again. So, thanks.
I don't have anything this evening, however, we are gonna make an amendment to the agenda, uh, for a discussion on this. So, Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, uh, you know, we have been meeting with, um, all kinds of people in, working for the county, um, yesterday. Today, in fact, we were hoping to meet with, uh, Mr. Hagler at our work session and, and get more information, uh, to see if we could, um, take some action. Uh, Mr. Hagler was stuck out in the Gas Hills area, um, himself, and, and couldn't, uh, couldn't make the work session. We, we, I think, did the best we could, um, but we didn't make any decisions and, um, felt like we needed more information. Um, given the circumstances, uh, and not wanting to push this off till, uh, you know, two weeks or, or in some other fashion, um, I would make a motion to amend the agenda, um, for, um, the, the purpose of having, uh, Mr. Hagler give us a, uh, update on, on roads and equipment availability so that we can, uh, hear from him and then make, uh, potentially make some decisions this evening.
I'll second that.
So a motion was made by Commissioner Nicolason to amend the agenda so we can get an update, and it's been seconded by Commissioner North. Um, part of the present, part of the reason behind this is that if we do not amend this agenda, the four of us cannot be together because it's an open meeting. So that's why we're amending it, so we can have this discussion now and get some action taking place. So, um, Mr. Hagler, if we could have you give us an update on where we're at county-wise, equipment that, uh, is needed out there, and, um, priority.
I, I vote aye on the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, you know what I'm looking for, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, obviously we have some equipment down, we have two blowers down, we have two blades down, uh, we have one plow truck down. Uh, we're still holding our own to keep the roads we have open, open. However, we have roads we haven't opened yet, uh, one of those is Buzzard Road, one of them is the Dry Creek Road, it's closed again. Uh, Pathfinder Road is closed, uh, when you get past, well, about the first mile and a half. And, uh, then of course we have Poison Spider that's been open and closed many times. Uh, we had an incident out there today where somebody stole one of the dozers that was out there and drove it for approximately a quarter of a mile and got it stuck and left it. And we were out there trying to get that out today, well, that's why it wasn't here, uh, we didn't get it out. We're gonna go back in the morning. However, uh, been in close contact with Converse County, they have offered to come and help us. They have the equipment, uh, they have blades, they have dozers, they have transportation. Uh, we do have a mutual aid agreement with them, however, uh, their county commission has offered to, uh, let us use the equipment with their operators at just the cost of the equipment, uh, which also covers repairs, if it goes down, they're willing to take that on. Uh, so the only thing we're really gonna pay for is the equipment ours and any overtime that they would get into, which we'll try to hold that to a minimum. Uh, with all that said, uh, it takes time to get that equipment up here, probably take a day, maximum two days. Um, they have the same problem I do, if it starts snowing down their way, they're gonna need that equipment back, if we can get it there. Um, hopefully some of ours is back up, we're actually using the city's snow blower as of today. However, we no more than got it out there and it went down. So that's the inherent business we're in, is equipment is being used hard, uh, parts aren't available. Everybody's having that problem, the state, the counties, um, anybody that's in the business right now moving snow, ranchers, their equipment's breaking. So, I would ask that you, uh, allocate a hundred thousand dollars to, uh, take on this endeavor with, uh, Converse County. Uh, will we need all that? I can't tell you. That's basically a month of operation of three pieces of equipment. And, uh, it adds up quick. Uh, we may not need it, we may be able to start picking up some of this ourselves. Uh, again, as our equipment comes back up and it doesn't snow, you know, they, uh, they're more than willing to be here tomorrow. Uh, so we have to start at some point, allocate some money. Uh, will I be back again? I hope not. But, uh, it's looking better, the days are getting longer and, uh, more sun, so. Uh, it only takes one storm, six inches, and everything we've got open now can close. And that's true for the ranchers.
Yep. Mike, uh, just for clarification, they're offering this just as a, as a gesture, not as a mutual aid?
It's not under mutual aid, uh, they're using the FEMA, uh, regulations as far as setting rates. Uh, but, uh, they, they just wanna come help, and they expect that of us someday. Just being neighborly.
It's just a neighborly county helping us out, like we're supposed to in Wyoming. Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Um, and, and Mike, you're, you know, feel free to weigh on this too. Um, that it's not under the mutual agree, the mutual aid agreement, um, that's fine. Um, but Sherman, do we need anything in writing? Um, or do we just kinda move forward in, in good faith, and is everybody comfortable with that? And is everybody comfortable with that?
So, it sounds kind of like a gentleman's agreement. Um, I have an email, I haven't looked at, but I, an email has been, um, sent out saying the rates they're charging, but the rates are it. I think it also says that if the equipment's damaged, that's on the driver, the, um, other county's driver. Um, I, I would like to have a contract just to cover liability at the same time. I, I appreciate wanting to just be good neighbors, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we're, we're all covered under the same insurance, so, I mean, they're under the same plan we're under. So, if anything happens, if they ran over somebody, something like that, yeah, we're all in the same boat on the same insurance. So, that, that isn't gonna be a problem, and, and because they're charging us for the equipment, they're willing to take the risk of it breaks down, they're gonna fix it.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Um, you know, Mike's been out there, um, himself personally, uh, every day, uh, for weeks. Um, and, and I trust his judgment, uh, as it relates to the road conditions, the priorities, the needs in terms of both the equipment and, and the personnel, um, uh, for, you know, given, given this update and given, uh, the earlier discussions that, that I've had, um, and that, that he's had with, with some of us, um, I would make a motion to allocate up to a hundred thousand dollars, um, for, um, road and bridge, uh, to engage Converse County for the use and of, of their equipment under the, the terms stated.
Second. So, a motion's been made up to a hundred thousand dollars and sec-, uh, by Commissioner Nicolason, seconded by Commissioner Laird. Discussion in the, and I guess one thing I would say is we did identify a line item this afternoon, um, Madam Clerk said we would be able to draw at least that amount out of?
Oh, definitely, we'll get that done.
Okay, discussion on it?
Uh, I'd like to say do it immediately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I appreciate everything you've done, Mike, and, and I know, I know there's a lot out there to, to get, but, uh, at least this will get us moving in the right direction, so.
It'll help, it should help significantly.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
So.
Uh, all in favor of the motion that was made?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.